Stop with the pledge.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our chairman is not here with us tonight. I believe he's probably enjoying himself somewhere. He said he was going to be on vacation, I hope someplace warm. Alright, so we're going to seat, no, we can't seat an alternate, I'm sorry. Not tonight. We don't have the selectmen's representative, but we can't seat another alternate for the selectmen. Is there?
No, we can seat her. We just can't seat the selectmen's. So if Tom's out, she can be seated.
Oh, okay. You're absolutely right. You're right. I can't count the four. Sorry?
Well, you got confused.
So Donna will be a voting member as well as our videographer. Is there any public comment on anything that isn't already on the agenda? No? Okay. So we have three public hearing tonight, hearings tonight. The first is kind of a cleanup postage increase. The town of Wakefield planning board is requesting an increase to abut a notice fees for certified return receipt mail on all applications to cover the cost of the postage increase. The abutters notice fees will increase from $6.76 to $6.80, an increase of 4 cents. Unfortunately, it's built into our zoning requirements and can't be changed except through a public hearing. So that's what we're doing. So I'll open the public hearing on the postage increase. Would anybody like to comment? Okay, I guess no comments. I'll close the public hearing. Could I have a motion on the postage increase?
I'll make a motion that we increase the fees to $6.80.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the second public hearing. Major subdivision plan application submitted by Charlie Zilch for property owned by Philip Emilio, Old Stage Road Holdings LLC on Old Stage Road and Willie Road, tax map 210-3025. The applicant is requesting an approval of a major subdivision plan application to subdivide the current parcel, 38.63 acres into eight single-family residential lots. Good evening?
Good evening. Nice to see everyone. My name is Charlie Zilch from SCC and Associates. I'm with Philip Emilio from Old Stage Road Holdings LLC. I brought along some table-friendly 11-by-17s. It's the exact same thing that we had submitted.
They all have one in there.
So everybody has a plan copy, so we're all set with that. Okay. Got a brief presentation I'll just kind of run through if the board would like.
Okay. Before we do that.
Sure.
Victor, you've reviewed the complete application and is everything here in the application?
Yes, sir. The abutters have been notified, the fees have been paid, and we're good to go.
So I think it'd be appropriate to have a motion to accept the application.
Make the motion to accept the application as complete.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. You're on.
Great.
Now we can discuss it on the record.
Okay. I brought along a different plan that's not in your plan set. It just basically shows the existing condition with all the lots that we're proposing, all on one sheet for your reference. So just stop me at any time if you have any questions as I go through this, but this shouldn't take too long. So as you stated, sir, the property is 38.63 acres in size. It has about 2,360 feet of frontage on Old Stage Road and approximately 1,840 feet of frontage on Willie Road. So it's got a ton of frontage on two roads right at the intersection of the two. The Willie Road frontage side of the property is within the residential three zone and on the Old Stage Road frontage side of the property, that's within the agricultural zone. So if you look at the second sheet, that's the existing conditions plan. And you can see that zone line closer to Willie Road than it is Old Stage Road, but kind of bisects the property. Everybody follow along with that? So basically, the site is gently sloped from southeast to the northwest corner comprised of a mix of open fields as well as recently harvested woodland. So soils on the property are predominantly well-drained, moderately well-drained throughout. There are wetlands present on the site as delineated by our wetland scientist Timothy Fawerta, and they're located through the site with the largest complex located basically on the southeast side paralleling Willie Road. You can all see where that is. It's a fairly large wetland complex of poorly drained soil that eventually spills over as it makes its way down to the roadway corner, and there's a couple smaller pockets of wetland down there as well. There's one isolated one over towards the west side of the bigger wetland complex as you make your way over to Old Stage Road. So four or five different pockets.
Does it drain?
It drains basically towards the intersection of the roadways. So the high point is up here at Willie Road.
Okay. But there's no brook or anything there?
No. No, it's, our soil scientist spent quite a bit of time in that area. It's a mix of somewhat poorly drained and poorly drained, so he keyed out the poorly drained soils area, the hydric soils, he flagged and we located them. But I put a note on the plan that that's basically an area when you get a lot of spring melt, a lot of rainfall, that it does make its way from that upper complex to the lower wetland areas. So we're trying to avoid that. There's no, it's not wetland, but it's an area that you shouldn't build in. It's not a place that you want to put a septic system or house. So we're going to keep away from that altogether.
Okay.
As far as the rest of the property, it's not in an aquifer protection zone. This is glacial till soils out here. It's not in shoreline protection and it's certainly not in a flood hazard zone. So there's no habitable structures on the property, so basically the site is considered undeveloped. So I know Phil was here probably two months ago?
Yeah.
And he was kind of discussing some potential layouts on the property or some things that he could apply. And so he considered a lot of different things, and what we basically came back to is looking for a very straightforward, conventional, single-family residential subdivision, just utilizing the roadway frontage to satisfy your roadway or your frontage requirements. So when you apply your zoning requirements from one side, you know, basically from the residential three zone to the agricultural zone, you get a yield of eight lots here. So when you look at the whole site of 30-some-odd acres, eight lots, you're averaging about four and three-quarter acres on average for lot size in here. So any of the lots that were created, and you can kind of see that on the big plan behind you, any of the lots that were created in the residential three zone are three acres or greater, and they have more than 150 feet of frontage. And then any of the lots that are created on the agricultural zone side are greater than five acres and have more than 200 feet of frontage. So all the lots proposed are going to have onsite septic systems and wells. There's no shared driveways, all have their own individual driveway. We have test pits on every single one of the lots. They all perked well in the areas that we did test, so we have good viable septic system areas for each one of the lots. Phil met with the road agent, they walked through, was the road agent? Okay, walked through the lots, they looked at all the site distance for the driveways, and he was able to get permits for each one of the driveways. They all have good site access, and where culverts are warranted, we're going to be proposing to put those culverts in. We did locate those on the plan. So all in all, like I said, a very straightforward, conventional subdivision. Down my way, you get a lot, a lot more lots than eight out of this thing, but I understand it's, the lot sizing is designed to maintain a particular density up here in keeping with the rest of the neighborhood. So you've got, like I said, average lot size up here is just under five acres with this development. All the building envelopes are very generous, big building areas, you won't have any issues with tight lot line setbacks or setbacks to wetlands or anything like that. So like I said, those are all quite large. The only other thing is one state permit was required here, and that's for state subdivision for any of the lots that were under five acres, and there's three of them, and they're the three along Willie Road. And so we applied for that, and that was granted. So we do have that state subdivision.
That's all. We have the approvals, yes.
Yep. So as far as I know, there are no waivers. There's nothing that I saw that didn't comply with your zoning and siting requirements, and obviously no variances, nothing that we're looking for, no shortage of frontages or anything like that. Yeah, that's really about it.
So I understand, Victor, that there was a technical review?
Yes.
So can you fill us in on?
Yeah, I mean, no one had any issues on driveway permits. There was one question Brad from the fire department mentioned about maybe widening the driveways, the apron a little bit, just to get the, for the radius for the fire trucks. The other issue is there is a hydrant, but I believe it's 2,500 feet down the road, so there's no water down that end of the street. So it's not a requirement, but the fire department had put in a request for either sprinkling the houses or a cistern being installed. But again, there's nothing legally binding that we could have them do that. And again, I think Dave could chime in on this. It's all flat area, there's two roads, I mean, it's accessible to both sides?
I wouldn't say it's flat. I mean, it does have a grade to it, but it, I know it's muddy soil up there, but I mean, this definitely is a much more fitting approach than the previous discussion we had, so I'm just trying to figure out if we're going to do the other one, because I was thinking we're going to try and approve the other plans, so. Yeah, I mean, how much water, is there any standing water on the property?
I'm sure there is there in certain plants. Like this time of year, there probably is.
Is there enough for a dry hydrant?
No.
Okay.
Now, the problem with when you do fire ponds is it's the winter conditions. You've got a lot for three to four feet ice.
You don't have to worry about water on that.
Yeah, so.
It's coming through.
Yeah. And they have to be really, really deep.
So there was that comment, so we pass that on. Is that something that you have an interest in pursuing, either a cistern or a requirement or sprinklers?
Have to look at the costs on both.
The long-term effects of it too, I would look at. So that's going to have an effect on the ISO rating for the insurance of the buildings. A cistern would help out the whole community. A sprinkler system will help out just the one house. Something I keep in mind.
So just so we're clear, that is not a requirement. It is a recommendation or a request, I guess, is the way the fire chief put it, for you to consider. We don't have the.
What size of cistern would you?
You know, that'd be something you'd have to sit down with the fire chief, I'm assuming.
I can't remember what the one was up that, I wish Tom was here, because he had to put one in. I don't, well, I don't know if he had to or if it was as well, but he put one in up north. I think it was either 10,000 or 20,000 gallons.
They're usually that size.
I mean, that subdivision was like, is over 20 houses too, so.
Right.
I think that might have been the requirement, because the lake's right there too.
That might have been, well, there's no close water to that subdivision at all.
Well, it's on the water of below lake. If you're talking about.
Oh, if you go, yeah, but we can't get a truck to it. So it's kind of, it's scary when you think of how close we are to water sometimes, you can't get the trucks to it. But.
That's miles from the fire station though, so that's.
It's not necessarily the distance from the fire station, it's a matter of how quickly we can get water from aid to the fire.
What about if there's a, if there is a hydrant further on down the street, is it, do you guys, possible to hook a line to a pump a truck and then pump up to?
Yeah, well, that's why like the ISO rating basically does everything off of distances.
Oh, okay.
So, you know, if it's just like the dead-end road, 1,000 feet for the dead-end road, so we, because you want every truck's outfitted with 1,000 feet of hose, so they can go in 1,000 feet, drop, and then leave a truck at the end of the dead-end road, so we don't, we have a way to move our trucks around. So that's something else to think about. But, I mean, I can't speak for the fire department, because that's not my job with the fire department, but I would say that, like I said, a cistern would help out the whole community in general. Might be something to think about to help with the abutters and their thoughts on things versus sprinkler systems only do the one house.
So since it isn't a requirement, we would not have the ability or we don't have the authority to put it in as a condition unless you said right now, yeah, okay, I'll do that, then we'd put it in as a condition. We can put it in as a recommendation on the approval, and it's, since we don't really have the authority to tell you, you got to do it, it's not in the regs. I don't want to sit here and say, if you don't do that, we're not going to approve your subdivision, because that's, that's not fair to you.
We don't have the ability to do that.
No, we don't.
Yep. Yeah, I'd go out to research, get some specific information and prices on it to really give an answer.
So we get to the point, if we do vote to approve, then we could add that as a recommendation from the fire chief for the applicant to look at and then get back to us. Is that a reasonable way to do it?
Yes.
I can't remember actually the last time we had a major subdivision plan before us. So my thought was that we would just run down through the requirements of, I know you nicely put a whole package of things together in terms of required, by written answers to the following.
So this is all wetlands where they're putting the stakes on, are they going to probably getting out there or?
No, by the time we actually get to it, probably be another month or so, so it should be.
It'll still be wet.
It'll still be wet, but it'll be a lot, it'll be less wet, so.
So did you, you put this set of requirements in the package?
Yes.
But I don't see answers to.
I think it's probably attached to that.
It says attached to it.
Yes.
Okay. Let's, it's a real check. Oh, okay. We just got the whole package tonight, so I'm looking at it. Alright, so just running down through the public facilities piece, there are no new roads, it's all existing frontage. There are eight lots proposed. I don't know what the cars, I don't know why that's. So in terms of traffic and roads, it would appear as though there are no issues.
No, it shouldn't be. I think it's eight new homes, 16 trips per day.
Right. So the lots are on a school bus route, but there obviously will potentially be an impact for the schools. Police and fire have both reviewed, with the exception of the cistern, they didn't come back with any additional comments. It's mostly a cleared area now, as I understand it?
Right. That's correct.
It's not a heavily wooded area, where there's going to be a lot of cutting, so what was it originally? Was it a farm? Was it a farm field or was it land that's been cleared just?
On the Willie Road side, it's very heavily wooded.
Right.
Only cut it off.
Okay.
I have, I have a question. Who dug these test pits? I'm a little concerned with this. I do septic work, I work with the state.
Okay. Can you, can you just hold that until we get through the?
I will, but I do have a question.
Yep, okay. There'll be plenty of time for discussion afterwards. So there's no utility issues, there's no fire and police other than the cistern issue. Vegetation, the site has been cut or logged, or so it's, it's open at this point. There are no deed restrictions. Whatever wildlife habitat is there is going to remain. There are fairly large lots. There are no drainage plans with the exception of the driveway culverts.
That's correct.
Did the culverts get checked by, did DOT give you a size for culverts and stuff they wanted in there?
The road agent.
The road agent. Yep. That is in the package too.
We walked each individual one.
You what?
We walked each individual one.
Okay. What size did he tell you to put in there?
I think it's 18. Some are 18.
Pretty consistent. Some are no culverts. They're all 18 though that are culverts.
Alright. 15.
15.
15-inch HDP. So there's no surface water issues other than the areas that get wet from snow melt, I'm assuming?
Yes.
There are, are the designs all approved?
Septic designs?
Yeah.
We haven't done any yet. No, we just.
So you have test pits on each?
Yeah, we did two test pits on each lot to give Phil some flexibility on layout and where we want to put septic systems.
And you have, you have perk tests on?
Yep, and those are part of the plan set.
That'd be the last page of the plan package.
And there's land that is considered undevelopable, that's the wetland area presumably, that's, you won't be building a filling or whatever on that?
No, and we didn't include that as part of our lot sizing as well.
You didn't, or you did?
We didn't.
Okay, so the lots are listed?
Yes. Yep, I gave you, I gave you segments of the contiguous upland and how much is wetland in the total lot area. So we didn't use it as part of our lot sizing requirement.
Alright. Questions before we open the public hearing?
Are you planning on selling these as like individual lots and having some sort of association at all, or these are just someone buys a piece of land and they do what they, what they want based upon the current zoning?
The latter. There's no association.
Okay. So are these, these are lots that you're going to build on and sell, or sell lots or you haven't decided?
I haven't determined that.
Okay. Obviously you can do, you can do either. Running through, the other day, I had the opportunity to go through, this was Victor, and we went through all 44 requirements for the submission. There didn't appear to be any waivers that were required. It was a complete survey of the property, the perk tests are all there, the lots meet, meet our zoning requirements. So I guess at this point, I'll open it up to the public for a comment.
My only comment was, either the lot in Willie Road in, on Old Stage Road, either first, second lot, there's exposed ledge there over the was. So I'm a little concerned with this test pit thing that they did.
Can you address that?
And I live there, I know what I'm talking about.
Which lot are we talking about? The second lot in?
The first one, third for second, the line's pretty close to there. Yes, it's close to me. I'm not sure which, how many feet is that in?
Can I show you? Dick, can you, Dick, Dick, can you ask for his name?
Oh, could you state your name?
Just in the butter.
So we need, we need that for the records.
For the minutes?
You and I didn't.
Roughly it's over 300, I think, 320 feet.
Probably a little to the line. 400 feet maybe. There's a very large area of exposed ledge where they did the logging area. I ride through there all the time, I don't want to.
So that was the one.
So I'm a little concerned with this test pit thing.
We did have, one of their test pits does indicate ledge at 50 inches.
Just right enough of the ground.
Okay, no, it's, obviously we.
There's a big area that's very exposed.
Well, we, like I said, we tried to get a couple of test pits on every lot, and only one of them, lot 13, I'm sorry, not lot 13, but lot 25, that was the one where we hit ledge at 50 inches. Everything else we were. 25 is the one right at the corner.
This is exposed. I usually go out there and walk around, but you could, you could sweep it off and bowl on it, it was very much exposed.
Phil, you were there for the test pits?
It's where the roadway goes in where they hit a landing. He has all gravel and sand to make a roadway, so I assume he's covered it up.
The test pit wasn't near the ledge. Right.
It was ledge, I believe they've been over there.
What, what he said was that the test pit was not near where the ledge is?
Well, I'm saying there is ledge over in that area.
Right.
There may be, there may be exposed ledge, but where we dug the test pits, we had good deep results without, and majority of the test pits, we didn't hit ledge. Like I said, we did hit one area on that lot 25, and all the test pits, like I said, we did two test pits for every 4,000 square foot receiving area, which is a state requirement for, which you need for, to prove a lot as a viable septic area. So we did that to ensure that we had a, you know, an area in each lot.
So the test pits don't guarantee that they'll get a permit. They'll need to get a full permit from the state.
Right, exactly.
To build a septic system on each one of the lots, so that will be a requirement that the building inspector will put in place.
Dale, my name's Philip Formley. I can confirm what he just said, because my family owned that property for 100 years. That's where I used to roam, and there was flat ledge, right, where exactly where he's talking about itself. And I don't know how far it runs sideways, but there is ledge here.
Alright, other comments? Yes, sir.
We have them not brought closer, I can't wake up with my property light on.
I can't see it from here, so I'm going to be seeing it from there.
I'm sorry, you need to see it.
I'm looking for Willie Road.
Didn't you say you were looking at Willie?
No.
Okay, here's where that little, there's that easement, the driveway that comes in, and you were the next house over. You're right up here.
And there's 50 feet from the stone wall.
Yes.
Up, and then it comes 75 feet back into the.
Yeah, and then it drops over to your lot.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, you come, 50 feet on Willie Road, and 75 feet back to the stone wall here.
That's thick. It probably shows up a little bit in this. So. There's that bit of heat that drops around, there's the big lump here. What's his last name, sir?
This is the one over there.
Yeah, and it's Willie Road right there.
This is 50 feet from the stone wall up, and then it goes.
Doesn't.
Yes, I mean, yes.
75 feet back into this wall.
Yep.
Next house.
That'll have to be.
Sure.
I mean, we've got the, you know, we've got a purpose for the, for the test pits, but.
A 40-foot strip on the inside.
Okay, so that's obviously a condition of building.
I mean, it would have to be submitted when it comes in for a building permit anyways.
Okay, right. So I can test it that anyway.
Philip Formley, and I have just another question for Mr. Emilio. I don't know if you. I don't know if you are aware that there is a historic site on that property. It's called the Old Age Tavern. I don't know if you know anything about it or heard about it at all.
I've heard about it.
The Wakefield Heritage Commission seven years ago tried to get an easement, preservation easement for that site and it fell through. But I was wondering if you'd be interested in talking to the Heritage Commission about looking at that site again and see if we can get a preservation easement, a half an acre.
Do you know approximately where it is?
I don't know exactly where it is.
Can I move this back or would you benefit?
This is, this is a little farmhouse right here. And there's a gate, there's a little gate right here that you can go in. Well, the little, the, it was right here in front of this gate, right in front of this little farmhouse. So we tried to get a hundred, a half an acre easement right there. And I, we would, we would still like to pursue that if you would be interested in talking to us about it.
So what, what is there now? Is it in the foundation?
It's just, yeah, it's just a rock foundation there left now.
Okay.
And there's nothing there except you can, you can still see the foundation work.
Can you, can you determine a perimeter of the foundation? You determine the perimeter?
You can, yeah.
Because I can't.
You can't see it?
I see scattered rocks, I don't see a perimeter that you can discern.
Well, you might not be able to discern it's a, but that's, that, those rocks there are part of the, probably the foundation.
I, I'd have to, the size of it, the cost, if it changes the lot sizing, I'll, I'll have to look into that.
Yeah, we'd be glad to talk to you about it if you, if you were interested in pursuing it any further. So.
Yeah.
I have no objection.
How big is that lot that it's on?
It's one of the five.
Why did it go through? What is it, like, they're all five plus, correct?
Whoever owned it didn't, didn't want to grant a lease.
If I may, why did it not go through when you tried to?
Um, they thought it would.
Refused or?
My, it was in my brother's name. My, my family, my mother passed away, he passed it on down to my brother. And it was pretty much all set and then they just decided, well, it would take away a little bit from the value of the property.
Okay, so it was a decision on, on his part?
It was on my brother, yeah, decision not to follow through. Not to follow through with it. But we had it almost done.
So that lot right now is almost five and a half acres.
So.
Yes.
Can I ask a question on that? If that was, if that was an easement and it was a half an acre, that doesn't necessarily mean that that lot size is smaller. It just means that part of that lot has an easement on it.
Right.
Is that right?
Right.
I'm not making a suggestion either way, I'm just, I don't think from a subdivision standpoint it would change, but.
I don't know that though.
I do not make any decisions semi based on what we're seeing around that.
I'm just, I'm just bringing it up so that we can maybe discuss it further.
Yeah, so I think what, what you're asking is would you be willing to at least have a discussion with the conservation commission?
There's a potential, yeah, there's a potential, I'm not gonna say no, but I don't wanna get into something that's.
No, 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 no. I, I think all they're asking is would you be willing to talk to them?
Yeah, no, I wouldn't do that.
Well, just, just for my curiosity, what would the intent of the easement be? Would it be just to preserve the area?
Preserve that site.
Okay.
And maybe we could get some, uh, some people from concrete to come over and do archaeological dig to see what is, what's still there. It's just to prevent some bulldozer going in there to bulldoze.
So what you'd look for is just something basically around the area where the foundation was?
Yeah, right. We could, we had a, we had an agreement, we could put up a fence around it and the Heritage Commission would maintain it, cut the grass and all that kind of stuff. And we have signs up stating.
That might increase the value. Grass can.
Isn't it, roughly where that, where the stones are, there is no foundation perimeter that I can find, but where the stones are, that's already in the road, front setback. So nothing can be disturbed there really anyways, really.
The road setback.
The setback from the, yeah, from, from, nothing can be built there.
There's a, well, you can see it on there, Phil, if you look over behind you.
It's probably better looking at that.
Yeah, you get your, you get your front step back.
Is this it right here? There's a, there's a little.
There's a barway right there. I think it's actually more to the, to the right of the barway than directly behind it. But this is rocks, so it's kinda.
Well, is that, is that part of the thing where, area where you're not gonna develop anyways?
Next to the road, I, no, they can't.
So, I mean, it wouldn't, it wouldn't.
You can't, you can't do anything anyways.
It wouldn't hurt the, the price of what you're asking for the price of the property then, right? Unless.
I don't know if they find, you know.
That's what we want, we want to have a discussion at some point.
Okay, alright. So it sounds like discussion can definitely happen.
My name's Rena DeBau. I don't know if this is a proper question, but can we know what kind of houses it ran, a two-story, what, what are they gonna be?
That, I haven't, I haven't determined that, it's up to, if someone buys a lot, it's, it's their choice.
Oh, so you're not gonna build, actually build houses and sell?
I don't, I don't know, I already, I'm not sure.
So he has the option of.
I can't, I don't know either.
Uh, once the subdivision is approved, we, we wouldn't have any ability to stipulate in the subdivision approval that it has to be a particular kind of house or whatever, as long as they meet the setback requirements in the zoning, you know, it can't be closer to the street, too close to the side. There is a height restriction, but it's two and a half stories. So at this point, the planning board doesn't have oversight on that. If the subdivision, if dividing up the land meets the conditions of the, of the planning board, then it gets, it gets approved and then if he builds the houses, he builds whatever he wants or he sells the lots. Sure.
Another question, as, as in the butter, what, like if we don't want it or we do want it, do we have any say?
You can come and you can tell us that you either want it or you don't want it, but let me just explain. The applicant owns the land, he has the right to submit a request to be allowed to subdivide it. If he meets all of the requirements that the town has, then the planning board can't necessarily just say, well, you know, your butters don't want it, you know, built, so we're gonna disapprove it. We're bound to go by whatever the rules are and they, they need to meet all the conditions and all the rules. But if they do and there aren't any outstanding issues, then we would, we would not be able to say no.
Okay, a couple of things.
Tell me your names first.
Yeah, whatever you go. When we moved up here, of course we moved up into the country, we didn't move into the city, so we don't want the city brought up to us. Now, when they build all these houses, aren't we a, aren't we a agricultural zone area?
Agriculture is one of the residential zones essentially, so you, as long as the lot size is five acres, then you can build a house on it. So these are pretty big lots. I mean, you're talking three acres on, on Willie Road and five acres on Old Stage Road. That's a big lot, so the house is gonna be somewhere, I'm assuming, that will be the most attractive, staying away from the wetlands area. This is not like a half acre or an acre zoning where, you know, this house is boom, 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 you know? So I, I mean, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, my, my lots are around three acres.
Right.
And that's not very big. Not my estimation anyway. But I mean, if there were maybe three or four houses in that area, that's fine. But eight houses, that's a lot of, that's a lot of space.
Okay, again, the zoning requires five acres on one of the zones, which the applicant has complied with, and three acres on, on the Willie Road piece, which the applicant has complied with. So there isn't anything else that he has to do in terms of seeking approval if he stays within those.
So we have two zones, agricultural and residential?
We, we have actually five zones, five residential zones.
But in our area.
So, just to specify for you guys, this lot is split by the R3 zone and the agricultural zone. So the field side of it is in the R3 zone, or the agricultural zone. The tree line is in the R3 zone. So the R3 is where they're allowed to do the three acre minimum lots and the agricultural, the minimum lot size is five acres, so.
See what happened was when they took those trees on, I got the neighbor's trees falling on my property, I've been cutting them off on my side. And then I got some of my trees that got over because the wind just comes through, so we wouldn't tell them. You know, so, we've had some things happen that I'm saying to myself, I, I don't wanna see it build up.
Let's get him on the back.
Bob Cogan, a couple of questions. One came up this evening. You're talking about putting in a cistern. That whole area is part of an aquifer where everyone pretty much, the water flows downhill from the top of, well, coughed hill. And what will the cistern actually have an effect on this aquifer? Everybody up there has a well. Last thing you want, a dry well. I'm just pointing this out, I don't expect an answer.
We have a, somewhat of an expert here from the fire department.
A cistern is just basically standing water that's in a.
It's a hole.
Concrete tank.
Yeah.
That is there, it doesn't leak out, it has to be filled by the department to ensure that it still has water in it.
Okay, so you're not making a pond?
We're not making a pond, no, that would be a totally different.
And it's not a dry well that would drain water out of the ground either?
That was the question, okay. The drainage off that hill is atrocious. Anybody that's been up there anytime recently, it can wash the road, get washed away, it was put in a year and a half ago. I don't think it would create a problem on these lots because it seems to be going more towards the opposite side of the road. I know my lots have drainage difficulties and it goes all the way down into the other end of Old Stage, down behind the lumberyard. I was just curious about the cistern, that, that was one that, that came up. The easement on the right of way is the second question. Right of way is what, fifty feet, fifty-two feet?
I'm not sure what you're referring to.
Well, there's a, there's a right of way, an easement going in between.
Way at the top of.
Mr. DeBau's lot.
Yep.
And the last lot, Willie Road going southeast. It's, it's in order to access the landlocked lot, you mind it?
Oh, I see, yeah. So.
It goes all the way through, technically the easement comes out, crossing the marsh road, pretty much goes all the way through Eldridge, the east. So my question is, there's a dotted line on here. It shows the lot line pretty much following stone wall.
Mm-hmm.
And the easement shows, I believe, if I can read this, where I sight thirty-six point three seven feet.
No, the easement itself is.
Believe that. And there's a stone wall that runs, looks like it's almost in the middle, I don't think it is, but that leaves off thirteen feet here to take some torch, Mr. DeBau's side, some torch, that last lot side. So where that dotted line is, does that go with that lot and what rights do they have to block that easement off if any, or can they use it?
I can answer that.
Okay.
It's simply a, an access easement for the abutting lot. It was defined by plan, we have a copy of that plan and our plan represents what was shown on that plan. The deed that was recorded refers to the plan that, that we use to recreate or, or, you know, basically define this on our plan.
That it is an actual easement.
It's an actual easement, there's already an existing woods road or driveway in there now.
Right.
Phil has absolutely no right to block that or cut off access to that. It's an easement, it's a right, it's a privilege for the abutting to cross that section of the property. If Phil blocks it off, you can haul him away.
Okay, so the property line then for that last lot follows the stone wall.
Correct.
Up to where if, there's a dotted line and then it comes down into that lot, which bypasses or that access road, correct?
The dashed line is, I assume.
It, it's the full fifty foot.
It is all the way up. It's fifty feet offset from the wall.
The roadway's not fifty feet.
My question is, is it on that lot or not? Does that lot follow the dotted line around it?
No, the lot line, as I understand it, is, is the stone wall.
It is the stone wall, that is the property line.
The easement is.
The dotted line shows the easement on.
Yep, right. So that easement's entirely on Phil's property, but the abutting property owner has the right to use that easement for access.
Okay. Last question, state permits for removal of stone walls. You're gonna be removing what, three on the Willie Road?
In, I mean, we're, we're accessing, we're accessing through the frontage.
Correct, but are stone walls in the state, I believe, are historical and they have to be permitted in order to take them down, is that correct or not?
That is, I do not believe that's correct.
I would check that before I put in the driveway then. Just a suggestion.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know as a, as a matter of fact whether or not there's any state permitting.
I know it's been discussed, I don't know if it actually is approved yet.
It's not something that we're aware of if a state permit is required to take piece of the stone wall out. I would assume that would be under the state historic commission, but I don't know if there's a statute that requires a permit.
Okay, when they built the road, rebuilt the road, so to speak, the Willie Road, it's gonna last ten years. They dug the trenches up, some of those trenches are deep enough for a grave site.
Mm-hmm.
Water run off on that hill, where's it gonna go when it hits Old Stage? Gets to the corner, the, 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 Willie and Old Stage going down those gullies.
Where's it going now?
That's what they're gonna be.
Well, there's, there's already an existing cross culvert underneath Old Stage Road. We showed that on the plan, there is a, there is a culvert there, it's an eighteen inch plastic pipe there.
Yeah, they, they changed them all, they put in new culverts on the road.
Yep.
When they rebuilt it.
No, they did, they did a fantastic job with the roadway, they're well drained, the, the water has direction to go and once it gets down to that intersection of roadways, there's a culvert there to handle that.
And then it goes across to someone else's property.
I have another question.
Yeah.
As we put these house lots in with bigger lawns, it's gonna be much more runoff, residual runoff, not being with roof lines and everything, that culvert will not.
So the requirement is, the requirement is that they can not discharge any more water off the site than is already being discharged. So presumably if that is maintained, which is part of our regulations, when they pull a building permit, they will be required to show that in fact they are not discharging any more water than is already being discharged. So that, the drainage as far as the street is concerned, the intent is that it, it won't be affected. If there's a problem now, the problem will still be there, obviously it doesn't get corrected.
You misunderstood what I said.
Okay.
With roofs, lawns, there's no vegetation or anything to hold that some of the water. The retention period is gonna be much faster with, you've got roofs, paved driveways, lawns, that culvert will not take that water.
So.
There is ledge exposed in that area, we probably try to explain that to you.
So point I was making was that they will have to do water management on the lots.
It's gonna be a lot.
Well, that's, that's the requirement.
Right.
So when, when somebody goes in there to pull a building permit, that's part of the requirement that no water can go onto a neighbor's property or off the site onto the street, no more than is already going.
And there's a number of ways you can do that, you know, you can do roof drain infiltration trenches.
Right.
You can do.
Dripline trenches.
Dripline trenches, exactly, that sort of thing. There's also, you can do dry wells for roof length, for roof drainage. A lot of people like little ponds, the name escapes me right now.
Yeah.
Retention ponds.
No, rain gardens, they like rain gardens, I see those, they're quite popular, they look like part of the landscaping and they, they take, you know, basically all the, the impervious drainage around the house and, and handle that fairly easily, so. Things like that can be incorporated into every one of the septic designs and mitigate the impacts from the impervious areas.
So the applicant doesn't have to improve the existing conditions, simply can't make them any worse. So if there's already a problem, that problem isn't gonna get solved by the work that the applicant's doing.
Okay, alright. We've already heard that Mr. Emilio is not really sure if he's going to build houses or let people build them themselves. Who's gonna control the runoff if he is not building them? Each individual homeowner is gonna be responsible and.
Whoever pulls the building permit will be required to meet those conditions and not allow any water onto a neighbor's property or off the site any more than is already going off the site. So that's, that's got nothing to do with who builds it, it's the building. So, that's, that's got nothing to do with who builds it, it's the building permit requirement. And the building inspector is the one that controls that once a building permit is pulled.
So that's already in place?
The building permit process is already in place, but he doesn't have building permits because he hasn't got a subdivision.
It's just, we're talking about the runoff.
Right.
Uh, so somebody's gotta be responsible for it, either the homeowner that's building it, the contractor that's building it, the landowner, somebody's gotta be responsible for it.
The owner of the lot will be presumably the person who will pull the building permit, um, in their name because the house, if, if a builder is building it, um, or if he builds it, then he'll build, he'll pull the building permit and he'll be required to manage that water that gets generated on the site. That's an absolute requirement and it's something that is done on every lot, whether or not it's a subdivision or not.
That was just a question, not, not present an argument.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not arguing.
And another thing to consider too is, is what Phil had considered here, there's a lot of different things that he could have done with this property. And this is probably the least intensive use of the property with the eight single family house lots on thirty-some odd acres here. Um, and as you can see, the wetland is in the back of the lots, so we're not having to create these incredibly long driveways to get past wetlands and wetland setbacks. Most of the houses can be built fairly close to the roadway, so you won't have all that additional impervious area being introduced to every lot. Um, and like I said, you know, each lot is, uh, I think the average lot size, four point seven-five acres in here. That's an awful lot of area, I don't think people are gonna wanna be creating that much lawn space around the house. The trend is towards smaller lawn areas, more trees, more, uh, forests between, or buffers between houses. And I'm sure you'll see the same trend here as well.
Oh, excuse me. I'm a secretary, but I'm also an abutter. Uh, you were, the list that you read off, you said that there was no surface water issues. Is surface water standing water that's there muddy all year long? Would that be surface water?
My understanding is that there's no pond, there's no, there's no year-round standing water or brook or anything like that on the site.
But it is muddy year-round, I used to walk my dog over there all the time when his brother owned it. And it's muddy in June. It's, it, it, not just the wetlands area, but the front of it, it's a muddy spot.
Yeah, the soils are, like I said, they keyed out as moderately well-drained soils. Um, and there's, there's, it's basically till over ledge out here, the entire site.
Trying to put a cellar over it.
And so the test pits that we had, we had anywhere from twenty-four inches to into their low thirties.
How far down was the moderately draining soil? Cause it can't be on top.
No, it's, the, the soils, that's the, that's what the majority of the site is comprised of, is moderately well-drained soils. And then of course you have poorly drained soils in the, in the back of lots where these wetland complexes are. So with soil types, they go from excessively well-drained, which you find in aquifers, which is sands, uh, group one soils. And then of course the worst is the very poorly drained soils. And so this is really pretty much right in the middle towards the wetter side as far as soils. Uh, but it is, um, soils that will support septic systems. You can perk the soil, it will support development such as this. Uh, it's not the greatest soil, I'm not gonna lie, but it's all, it's, uh, but it's certainly soils that meets the standards, both locally and at the state level. And not unlike a lot of soils you see in most towns.
Well, we have to have a sump pump and it's not even a full cellar, we have to have a sump pump. And there are two houses down further on Willie Road that have had mold issues because of the, the wet area. And the house on the other side of Crab Apple is actually in a, it's all, it's muddy all year long. So, the whole area is very muddy.
Well, the other thing, my house, I live right across the street from Willie Road. My foundation's only four feet in the ground, it's solid ledge.
Mm-hmm.
So I know the property.
Right.
And I wanna see these test pits cause I truly believe that, that not, uh, the standards, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah. Can I show you something on the map?
Sure.
One of the maps. Right in there, right in here, just standing water, almost all year long. We could, we could never mow the grass, right in here, dug well, dug well, right in here. Every, water the cows, every night and morning, we drive the cows up and they water, put them in the pasture up in here. And then at night, so right in this area where the stone wall is, or just maybe a little bit north of it, or south of it, uh, there was a dug well. And right in this area right here has always, always been wet, we could never mow that grass right there, so.
Uh, Phil, you have a driveway that goes through there right now.
I don't know, if you, the driveway?
The side of the stone wall. Right.
Is the driveway gonna be on this side of the stone wall, right there I guess?
It'll be, yeah, it's, it's already there.
But I'm thinking, if, if somebody's thinking about developing this area right in here, they're not gonna be able.
I can tell you, I dug on the lot, just to the, on the right-hand side of that map, you can see two buildings sitting on it. And I, I've done some actual site work in there myself. Um, I, I sunk a tractor out of site in June, uh, with the mud up there. I'm not saying the rest of this lot is that way, I'm just giving you a heads up that I know that there's definitely some bodies of mud throughout there. Um, I don't think the ledge was, the ledge was a little bit farther down over there, but, uh, it definitely wasn't deep.
And gee, it's, I, I can't mow my back lawn until a little bit of June.
Right.
It flows, it flows.
So, the board does not have the right to say, um, we think the land's too wet, therefore we're gonna disapprove the subdivision. They will need to get state permits, um, for the septic systems. Uh, the test pits will, um, will, will have to be reviewed by the state, these have gone to the state, I'm assuming as part of the package.
They were, they were submitted, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, and so, um, what we can review, and they've obviously heard your comments about the fact that the land is wet. I think the engineer has, um, indicated that that's a symptom of the moderately poorly drained soil, that it holds the water at the surface and doesn't let it, you know, it's not like bony gravel, it'll, you know, perk right down through. Um, so their septic system design will have to take that into account, obviously you have to.
Yeah, most of these systems will be raised systems. Uh, Phil will have to be cognizant that, you know, there is groundwater and it'll keep the foundations up, make sure they're properly drained. But, uh, like I said, this is not unusual, um, I work all through the state. And there's soils like this is, is, this is, I would say, pretty much typical soils throughout the state.
So, um, other comments?
Well, on the Willie Road side, it shows a buffer zone between the house lot and the actual house lot.
We show, uh, setback lines.
Those are the setbacks required by zoning.
Yep.
So they, they can't build any, that, those dashed lines, uh, indicate the setbacks. So they can't build anything any closer to the lot line than those dashed lines by code.
As well as the street line.
I thought it said buffer zone, buffer zone is, it could be right by the, the road so that it can't be disturbed. Free typically buffer zone, free vegetation is on board.
I didn't see a notation that these were listed as buffers.
No, I, I believe they're just.
The setback for building, the building line.
Yeah, I've got it shown on, uh, if you look at sheet eight, it's just one spot where it shows it. It shows a couple times on that sheet, says either a septic system setback line or a building setback line, typical, right.
Yeah, I see the setback lines, that's not a big issue.
Right.
The act is not an issue, uh, it's just, just a comment.
Yep.
Buffer zone.
Okay. All right, other, uh, questions or comments?
What is the setback in the road?
Uh, I think it's, does it differ for the two different zones?
It does, and it's fifty feet from both zones.
Okay, so it's fifty feet.
Yep.
Setback line, so you can't build a house any closer than fifty feet. And obviously they're probably gonna be back further than fifty feet because that would be less than attractive. But they can build up to fifty feet from the road right of way. And that's not the pavement, that's wherever the, wherever the town land is that the road is built on.
And what's the setback between neighbors?
Twenty feet.
Twenty feet.
Twenty.
Twenty feet.
So you effectively have a forty-foot, the closest one building can be to another is forty feet. But again, these lots are really generously sized. And, uh, I would imagine that most people try and keep them centered on the lot, so you can have some pretty substantial buffers from one house to another.
Correct.
That's correct.
Fifty for the street, twenty for the side. And the agricultural is fifteen from the rail line, uh, our three is also fifteen from the rail lot line.
Okay, so the rear of the property is fifteen feet, twenty feet on the sides, fifteen feet on the back.
Fifteen from the wetlands.
And it's thirty feet from the wetlands.
Thirty feet from the wetlands, right.
So where the, where they've indicated that there is actual wetland soil, not necessarily what you might see, but when the, when they go out and actually test, um, then they have to be thirty feet, um, back from any of the wetlands. So they can't work up to the areas where, um, where there's, where there's water.
Yeah, and those have all been flagged.
Right.
In, in the numbered series as shown on the plans.
And there's a complete survey.
Yes, yep, yep, on the ground survey.
On the ground survey. Uh, any other comments or questions? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking to my left.
So actually, considering the wetlands and the setbacks, actually the amount of spot, space that they can build is really quite small, right?
No, it's quite big. Um, like I said, we didn't include the wetland areas as part of our lot sizing as, as your town requirement shows. So every five acre lot is five acres exclusive of, of any wetland. Any three acre lot is three acres exclusive of any wetland area.
So there may be a lot that's, sorry, there could be a lot that is five and a half acres and those five acres are buildable.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, I gave you a breakdown, I believe.
What's the total acreage of this?
Yeah, I did.
Thirty-eight?
Yeah. So like, um, just lot twenty-five, for an example, that's, um, five point six-four acres in total. And it's got five and a half acres or five point five acres contiguous upland.
So there's more land there than.
There's more, yeah, actually there's more than, than the five, the only one that's, um, right at five acres, just slightly greater is, I think it's twenty-five dash five, which is in the far subtlety end on, uh, Old Stage. And that one has, um, that one's just at five point oh-two acres. It has just a small, small tiny portion of wetland on it.
So does everybody understand that, that the acreage requirement on Willie Road is three acres? It's three acres not including the wetlands. So what, so the lot, for instance, the second lot, third lot in on Willie, uh, third lot in from the corner, um, is actually almost four acres in total size. But, um, they can build on, uh, about, they can build on three acres.
All right, actually it's a little more than that. How many acres of wetland do we have? Was that ever figured out?
Well, you could probably figure it out if we added them all up. We skipped the calculus.
So that process is actually more than thirty-eight acres?
No, eight acres, but, uh, once you take out the, um, the area of all the wetlands, the total yield is only eight lots. Between the five and three acre lots.
I'm, I'm just trying to figure that number out right now, I'm just, it's.
How many three acre lots?
So the average, eight lots, thirty-eight divided by eight lots is four point seven-five.
Yes, yep.
And we have three lots.
Or three lots at five acres.
No, three lots at three acres.
Three acres, I'm sorry.
So what you'd have to do is just basically take my contiguous upland area for each of the eight lots, add that up and subtract it from the total lot area and that will give you how much area is left in wetland.
It's like, like about four and a half acres, give or take.
It probably would be, yeah, that sounds about right.
Yeah.
That's, I mean, just.
So it's basically one lot size.
Yeah, I would imagine, yeah.
That's not buildable.
Wetlands are delineated by soil and vegetation, what does the vegetation show?
Uh, I, I don't know.
It could actually be larger than what is shown if they're going simply by soil.
Here's the requirement, you have to hire a certified soil scientist to go out and physically flag the wetlands.
Physically flagging it by soils, it also has to be flagged by vegetation, I hold certification as a wetland scientist. It has to be done.
Well, then I'm assuming that's what was done because.
Yeah, exactly.
No, that's, that's exactly what was done, uh, like I said, Tim Forward is the soil scientist, the wetland scientist that we used on this particular site. I've known Tim for probably thirty years, he does an excellent job. Um, and he also has to certify, it's his stamp, his endorsement that goes on this plan, that he did it correctly and that he did it for, uh, the delineation of, of, I've got a couple of notes on here. But the one I think that you're referring to is that, um, I'll read it to you, just says the wetlands were delineated according to the Army Corps of Engineers Wetland Delineation Manual. And then it goes on to describe that manual, which is what the state uses as their guide, guideline for identification and delineation of wetlands. So he's bound by that to do that, yeah, and that's, that's what his stamp certifies. And like I said, I have a lot of faith in, in his abilities.
Okay, so.
Did that recently?
Yes.
And he was able to check vegetation recently?
Uh, well, it wasn't the winter, he did this, uh, when did we have him, last fall?
June.
Was it June?
Yeah.
Wow, I've been less, this slow getting this thing done. God.
That's why I'm just like, recently?
So it sounds like we've answered all the questions, and perhaps everybody isn't happy with the answers, but you'll have answers. Um, if, uh, that's the case, then I'm gonna close the public hearing so that the board can discuss, um, the, uh, the application. Comments, uh, concerns from board members? Don't know, you can't come down if you haven't seen anything other than, unless you've got very good eyes.
The camera had to zoom.
Oh, okay, all right.
She probably sees it better than me.
Yeah, that's probably true. The cam was definitely better than my eyes, I can tell you that. I mean, this, this minimum meets, meets all the zoning requirements and there's some things that they've done that have gone, gone above that. Um, I don't see any issue with, um, you know, approving this. Okay, so, um, will we, um, they will obviously need to meet all the building codes, um, all of the, um, uh, septic system, uh, approval codes, um, and we will, um, I think, uh, include the recommendation from the fire department, um, as a recommendation, but not a condition of approval. So if people are ready to vote, um, I think we've had our questions answered. Um, there are no waivers, uh, requested or required as far as I can see. Um, so we need a, a motion to approve the application, uh, subject to the recommendation by the fire department. So moved.
Seconded.
All right, moved and seconded with that one, um, condition as a recommendation. Any more comments?
Either the cistern or the sprinkler.
Or sprinkler, right. Any other comments? Questions, concerns?
I think this is a lot clearer of a plan than both.
I didn't see that one.
I wasn't quite sure what we're gonna do.
All right, uh, Hall and Faber? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's approved.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you all for coming and, and voicing your concerns. Uh, I think the developer has heard the concerns, so hopefully that will. Thank you.
How to clear a road. Jeez, nobody wants to see you anymore.
Practice, well practice. So the next public hearing is a minor site plan review, uh, application. Submitted by Ralph Fogg. Excuse me. Submitted by Ralph Fogg for Lakeview Marble and Granite owned by Lance Moulton at twenty-one oh six Wakefield Road. Tax map one seventy-nine dash zero five one. The applicant is requesting a minor site plan review for, in addition to an existing commercial business.
That's true, um, is it, um, is it possible if we meet the criteria that an approval could be issued maybe?
Well, is the application complete?
The application is complete, the abuttes have been notified, and the fees have been paid.
Alright, so I would entertain a motion to accept the application.
Make the motion to accept the application, that's complete.
Oh, sorry.
So, thank you, everything goes well, it'll be approved.
I'll try to behave.
Alright, you've been here before.
I have.
So you can remember this vaguely from several other meetings.
Dick, we all gonna vote?
Oh, I'm sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. So, um, I know during the, um, what do we call them, a conceptual reviews, it was recommended that we, um, address the stormwater management, right? Um, and I think that it could be best addressed with a best management practice in the form of a infiltration trench. Or I heard earlier tonight, they referred to as a drip line, um, trench. I think that will effectively address any runoff or stormwater management issues that, or concerns that you might have. During that conceptual review, I submitted some, uh, drawings that included a six inch pipe at the bottom of the.
Right.
Footings, and that's standard for foundations that are going to be occupied. So I, and my thought process was putting that in there at that level. And then, as it was pointed out to me, um, through the conceptual review, it's not necessary, and perhaps if it's in there at all, it should be brought towards the top of the irrigation trench.
Correct.
Or infiltration trench.
If you're gonna infiltrate the water off the roof into this.
Yeah.
Putting a pipe at the bottom simply causes the water to go somewhere else.
There's no retention.
No retention.
Yeah.
So are, are you changing that, cause the, the.
Well, you know.
Appears to be the same as what we saw last time.
I, I failed to run lines through it, um, and I, I know that Lance and I both hold the position that if you want a pipe in there, like an overflow safety, um, device, we'd put it in, uh, so that it, the six inch pipe would remain four inches below the top of the finished grade.
Okay.
Um, but if it's not necessary to have it, if the infiltration trench is sufficient to retain all of that drip, all of the water coming off the roof lines and stuff, um, we would omit the whole.
The pipes altogether?
Yes. That, and would, you know, we're hoping that the planning board will, will tell us what they prefer.
How deep is that? Um, gonna be with crushed stone or whatever you're putting in?
Well, it's gonna be at, at least thirty inches wide from the, from the, um, base of the footing. And follow that whole foundation right up about four foot tall, so.
So four feet deep?
Four feet deep of stone, yes. And that's inch and a half, we figured that the larger the voids, the more water.
There's no basement in this, right, it's just a slab?
It would be a slab, so the.
Grade level?
Yeah.
Yeah, frost wall, so you're at grade level, so you're not worried about water coming into the basement?
That's correct.
Okay.
Well, I, I think, I thought that the, the, the pipe was something you were interested in, in channeling water into this area that you created behind the wall. Normally with a drip line trench, you would not include any.
Overflow.
I mean, it's not intended to be a foundation drain.
Right.
Um, it's intended to perk the water into the.
Back down.
Into the ground.
And once we get to the bottom of the footing, those soils are definitely perccable, there's a, a lot of, um, um, rock, I mean, the whole.
So if you don't see a reason to have the pipe in there and you're using drip, drip line trenches, then I, I would say that we, if we approve it, it should be approved without the pipe, um, in the drip line area at all. And this is already exists.
Yes.
So from a groundwater point of view, what, what are these lines here?
That was basically an, an overflow and anything that might.
So is, is this an area you're gonna fill with stone as well, or was that just for the pipe?
Well, no, we intended to, to make sure that anything that was built up would head up into these, I mean, cause the walls are basically big dry wells, but.
So I, I, that's my question though, is it, what's in this process, stone?
All stone.
Is it deep, like?
Oh, yeah, so the wall, from the face of the wall to the back of the dry well on the walls is, um, face to back is above forty, um, I'm sorry, fifty-six inches.
So this is already in?
Yes.
Across here, and you'd be adding this little piece in here?
As they spill away and like.
And so it would connect the drip line trenches into the rest of that.
Yeah.
Dry well area, seems like a good way to go.
The elevation's too, I mean, it was, it would, it would be, um, quite unnatural for it to be able to build up and flood towards the abutters properties.
Personally, I think it would work a lot better without the pipe for its intended purpose.
Yeah.
So, and I, I mean, it's, I'm not a hundred percent sure, I'm not an engineer, but I would think that going down that deep with thirty inches should give you enough.
It'll never freeze. So there'll never be ice issues, yeah.
Don't, don't say that.
It, well, it's pretty warm, you know, when you're, when you're at that level of backflow and all that, it stays fifty-two, fifty-four degrees. It's like the firm.
I just pulled out six feet of frost in an area.
So does that plan that you have here, is that? I guess that's this one here.
Yes.
Right, okay. So, well, the approval would include what's on this plan as well as, um, the fact that, um, the pipe would be removed, wouldn't, wouldn't be installed.
That's only cost savings. Is that, the, so, so the pipe that you have proposed is, would drain into that?
That would, that would.
You don't need.
But that's where it's gonna go, right.
So what I'm getting at is there'll be no need for this going into here, the pipe would be going into here.
There won't be a pipe.
And it'll just act as a dry well.
But he's talking about connecting this area behind the wall with the drip line trench.
And that, that would still be.
Not by a pipe.
Oh, by the drip, okay, that, by stone, okay.
So it'd increase the size of the dry well.
How much elevation drops from here to there? Is it all, it's, uh, it's hard to say on the map here, is it all level?
From where the back of the addition begins, towards your left elbow, is that what you're talking about?
So from, from the back of the building.
Yeah.
To the stone wall, is there any elevation drop?
Oh, yeah, there's, it's about, um, four and a half feet, so it's about fifty-four inches.
Right, so you're probably better off not to put that in because you're gonna create an exit for the water. You mean, not, not connect.
You're talking.
Don't connect it because it's dropping four feet, so you wanna keep the water in around the foundation, around the foundation.
So, and when I'm talking about elevation changes, I'm talking about existing natural grades right now.
Exactly, but, so what I'm saying is if you have, if this over here, this area down here is four foot lower than the ground level of your building, then you're just gonna basically, if this is all crushed stone, it's all gonna push out of there versus if you close it, it's gonna do what it's supposed to do and perk it down.
Okay. So, is this part already in? That part is hard, I mean, these walls right here.
So everything behind the wall has already got the stone there.
Right, except for this connecting.
Moving this connected piece.
And really, you know, that was gonna be like a two foot by two foot from below the finished grade.
Yeah.
So it was kind of.
But my point is, it, it kinda defeats the purpose if we put it in there, because the whole point is to utilize the volume in here.
And retain, retain it.
Retain it so it can slowly perk down.
I see the point, I, I agree with it.
If you're thirty inches out and thirty and four feet down on that grade, um, I mean, I don't think you have to be a rocket scientist to figure out that that's gonna accommodate an inch of water, um, easily off of the roof, so. And I'm sure with time, it's gonna delineate the amount of water that's gonna be in there, so.
It's very perccable, I mean, this, there's a, it's a rock pile, basically.
So, um, the, the, there is a, uh, this is a minor subdivision, so.
Same plan review.
Yeah, there's no.
I'm sorry, yeah.
We can do a subdivision if we have to.
Okay, that's enough.
Okay, alright, sorry, just go, take it all back.
You know, off the small subdivision.
Quarter acre lots.
Alright, so, I was just going to look at the minor, to see whether there were any waivers that we ought to, um, so name and address, is, uh, obviously, that's all on the, uh, application, plan.
Not to be picking on it, when moving the shed, does that require us, because the building is moving its location, I think that's considered, uh, substantial. Um, and it's just a shed, I'm not saying it needs much around it, but does that need impervious now that it's getting moved?
What does it have now, do you have a drip line trench around it?
Uh, no, right now, it just sits on a, a monolithic slab that's, the outside edges, I mean, it was extra concrete. When you had the extra concrete, you bought the thing, and then they went and got a permit for the extra outbuilding afterwards. I could.
I, I'm just, I'm just thinking, I mean, it's, it's a small building, it's not gonna take much to do it.
Right.
But it is getting moved, so that's a substantial.
Yeah. So there's, if you were to, to do a site visit, out back here where the back of the existing building is, there's a, uh, rock retaining wall with a little staircase. It was gonna be set up behind that rock retaining wall on, on top of another slab, we're just gonna pour, you know, not a, um, not a, like a structure slab or anything like that with frost walls, but a, another, similar to the same type slab it's setting on now.
Right.
We've moved them before, just to put the racks on, and that, the one that's existing would probably be pushed out back and have more of those triangle racks on for stock. So are you just suggesting that there should be drip line trenches, um, around for the.
Just on the, on the, on the shed, just because, one, it's on the edge of the property.
Yeah, it's within the, it's on the ten foot setback.
Right, I know it's in the ten foot setback, but, you know, one of the things we wanna make sure is it's not going to the neighbor's property.
Sure.
And I'm not saying it's a lot of water, it's a, it's a small shed.
It's still that same pitch.
It, it is.
Yeah.
And it's getting relocated, which is substantial.
And Lance doesn't mind ripping it, if he's told to rip it down and lose that shit.
I'm not saying rip it down, I think what he's getting at is, whi- which way does this roof pitch? In other words, the water coming off that roof would that tend to go towards the property? Just one side?
Little shed right there.
Right, so that, that water's gonna go towards the back of the property?
Yeah, towards the, towards that rock.
So I mean, maybe it'd be worth it just to throw in a small trench behind it just to catch it.
It, well, when, if you were to observe it, I would encourage the board to go over and look at it, cause if you were to observe where the shed is gonna end up, you'll see the rock wall, the little retaining wall that's built there and ready to receive the shed.
So the water, if the water comes off, it's gonna get, it's gonna stay right around it?
It'll all head this way towards this wall, but gradually, it's duff, you know, it's, it's, um, it's natural type, um, ground cover right now, you know, leafy, duffy type material that does slow down the water. All of that stuff doesn't, uh, is not going to be.
I'm just looking at this one.
If somebody was gonna come in and build a, a shed like that, would you require a drip line trench? So I would, I, I think as part of the requirement would be to put a drip line trench on the, whatever, the downward slope.
Yeah, you got the rock wall there, so the water's gonna come down here, and my guess is probably gonna hit the point of this where it's going downhill.
This is a, than this, okay, so it would certainly be headed towards the foundation drains or the infiltration trenches. By way of nature, but I don't, I don't see a problem with enhancing any kind of drip line trench.
And that's all we're saying, I mean, I don't think it's gonna be huge, I think it's only gonna be, what, thirty by thirty?
Hold on, you can actually do a twelve inch, why, just right underneath the drip line?
And it's, it's only on one side of the shed, so it's not like you gotta do both sides.
Yeah, if that's a requirement, that could easily be met, you know, and what I'd probably do is trench it, throw in the cloth and throw in more inch and a half.
Yeah.
Right, and, and that's all it is.
So you're okay with that? Oh, yeah.
Alright.
It's, that's simple stuff, the machine does it all.
Yeah.
It, it is, and it's just, it's one of those things that, that's what we're trying to do with this, so.
So, um, just going down the requirements to make sure that if we need to waive something, that we're okay waiving it. There's a location map.
Yep.
The boundary lines are for the whole site and not shown on the, on the submission, as far as I can, I think.
On the tax map?
No, not on the tax map.
Okay, here's your locus.
Right.
And before that, I believe is the tax map, that's, it should have boundaries and, and distances. And then on this plan here. Well, it doesn't have the, the distances, but I, I don't think it would be hard to, oh. Hard to, hard to put them on there.
Is that what, what are you showing right here, this is, is this, this is property line, this is setback?
These are elevations here, that's hundred and four.
Yeah, that, that is a ten foot setback.
So that dash is ten foot, this dash is twenty foot.
That's the closest place on the, where it comes to.
Yeah, the shed is.
We don't have a copy of that plan, I don't know.
He will need to provide one when he comes in for the work.
Okay.
Okay, to pull the building permit.
That will show the, the boundary lines.
He, he, he's going to need to show, not only that, but the distances from each, the four boundary lines to the addition. And the historic deeds on this do have all the, you know, the pins, uh, the monuments notified and, and the distance between them. There was a survey done by, um, just for our conditions, um, the Clough guy, um, David Clough did a, um, existing conditions survey. So he saw the pins, he noted the pins and all that stuff in that. And I, we'll add that.
Do we have that in this package?
No, but we will when the, when the building plans come out.
Right, you wanna keep the notes of.
I have, yep.
What we're gonna add, um, for conditions.
Okay, so it's approved with, without the pipe?
Without the pipe.
I don't know how you wanna word this, if you wanna call, uh, to add storm mortgage management, or do you wanna go ask for the drip line trench? There's various ways of.
But before you get there, removing this piece of, um.
Connector.
Connecting, um, dry well.
I, I would've called it the spillway, but without it, it's nothing.
Between the existing, um, rock fill, stone fill behind the walls, we're removing the connection from the new drip line trench. So the trip line, drip line trench will be a standalone with no connection to anything.
Okay.
No pipes, no overflow, um, to the existing. So, can, can the property lines be added to the, all we have is this one property line, right?
Well, in the diagram, the whole, the whole.
We don't have the full thing, you have the full thing there.
Is that part of the application though?
It's on this. If you look at this.
I, we do not have a copy of that. I don't see that full up.
Well, we have a, we have a takeoff, I believe, in here. That's where he provided this.
What is it?
Go on, we'll look it up.
Should fold out.
Yeah, I mean, it's not a fold. It should flop out like that, probably third page in, and the green, the green binder.
That's all I have.
I don't think I got.
I got a material list I can have.
I got a material list I can't from Brock. That's why not a, uh.
I guess the materialist.
So at, at some point, we're gonna need to have the boundary lines, um, because that's a requirement on the minor, minor site plan.
Okay, boundary lines.
I mean, I think it's significant enough, I mean, I, I. If we're nowhere near the boundaries, I would say, um.
Nope.
We'd waive it, but I don't think we should waive it at this point.
Yeah, and, and I think he has the documentation, we just need to make sure that that's, that gets included.
Right.
So I don't see a problem.
Right.
We, we will be looking at this, uh, where it's right on the ten foot.
Yeah.
Line, so we will, right, you know, we're gonna ask for, and if we can't see that or verify it, you know, then he's gonna have to submit something.
I don't think the.
Inspector could ask for that too.
So. The main building itself, the, the addition.
Yeah, that's good.
The, the addition to it, is that gonna be, is the corner of the building gonna be at the ten foot?
Nope, it's gonna be about eighteen feet away from it.
Eighteen feet from the ten foot, okay.
Okay, so here's Wakefield Road.
Okay.
Here's the house and here's the pub. This is a sideline, well, we, we would consider the sideline.
No, I, I, I can see.
Oh, we got a rock wall running down there.
It is a rock wall.
Right, so. I'm just concerned with what Victor was.
Yeah, the short, the shed is in question, um, and we will verify this, we will verify this on site. Um, I'm not concerned about that, but the shed.
So the trench line ditch, drainage ditch, can be in that ten foot buffer, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Alright, somewhere on the drawing, you, you should indicate the, you know, the road frontage and that sort of thing. I mean, you, you probably have the information, I just don't, I don't see it noted, uh, noted, just so we.
Can I see that?
Sure.
We know what the current zoning is.
Cause I'm assuming you're probably just gonna take something like this and submit it right in the same zone.
Does the drawing show all of the buildings, all the structures on the site?
There's, um, on the large map that will be provided to the town, it's got an exist, well, it's got a. Existing conditions and then the proposed conditions. And it does have the, uh, existing homestead.
Bless you.
So it does. Okay, so that, it has that.
And each and every, uh, it's got the parking spaces, it's.
Driveways, parking spaces, that's all on there.
Yep.
Uh, setback requirements are on there.
Is there an easement for the driveway? I'm, I'm just. Is that on here?
Lance Plows, the other guys.
Right.
It's, it's in the survey this time.
It's, okay.
Yeah.
It's also in the historical deeds.
That's why we need the, uh, the total.
What, what do you think you're looking at for lot coverage, as far as impervious, impervious?
Um, there's gonna be more pervious area by the time the project's done than there is existing now. Um, so the, uh, the forty by thirty-two, that's a hundred and, what, a hundred and, uh, twelve hundred and eighty square feet. Twenty by thirty-two is twelve hundred and eighty square feet. The additional two and a half feet beyond that, the pervy, I did have it written down somewhere. Right in those little notes, it says, uh. The, uh, the infiltration trench, uh, will give you a thousand fifty-six cubic feet of, of, um, area to drain into. Um, no, actually thirteen hundred and ninety-two, I'm sorry, thirteen hundred and ninety-two cubic feet of infiltration trench. So that's around the building.
So, but what about the?
He's looking.
Lot coverage is what.
The gravel, is, so when gravel's put in, it's considered impervious.
Yeah.
So what we're looking for is what's the total impervious surface, including the driveways, the, and the rooftops. Versus the eight total square footage of the lot, of usable land on the spot.
Present versus proposed.
Right.
So the percentages wa, percentage wise, um, after this existing condition was done, there was. Sixty-four, but I think sixty-eight, sixty-four percent.
It looks like you've got enough here where you can sit down and actually crunch some numbers to get it.
Yeah. She's already, she's already submitted.
Okay, so I've, I've been out there, so this addition, where the addition's going, this is pretty much already impervious. Because it's, it's a crushed stone, what you would call the ground.
So you're suggesting there'd be no change.
So, yeah, well.
And actually lessen it because now we're taking that space and putting it into the trench.
Yeah, okay. Um, and she does have the impervious areas after the project is done. Percentage, I'm sorry.
As far as the approval, I don't think it really matters at this point, cause what you're doing, doing it this way is gonna meet the requirements, it's just, uh, it needs, you need to have those numbers.
Okay, so after this, this, after this project that exists now was finished, there was sixty-two percent of the site. Was imp, um, impervious. Sixty-two percent of the whole site, so there'll be less than that, that'll be impervious after this infiltration trench.
So I guess we'll wanna know what that number is, right? So i- if it's sixty-two now, maybe it'll be sixty-one, right?
Might be.
Or fifty-nine.
Yeah, you can figure, um, forty times, let's keep it simple.
So what's getting removed for impervious surface other than the building itself, is there gravel in an area that's getting removed?
That would be removed at the end of this project would be, from the impervious area, it would be. Um, thirty-two times, that's sixty-four, a hundred and, a hundred and twenty-eight.
So it's still probably gonna be right around sixty-two, sixty-one to sixty-two percent.
A hundred and twenty-eight, maybe is, oh, yeah, two hundred and eight, um, twenty-four.
I'm not even sure that's gonna hit one percent of the lot, so.
Two hundred and thirty-two square feet, or, or, yeah, square feet.
So, the question I have is, do we do all of this with all these conditions added on, or do we? Uh, table the application and come back in two weeks with all the stuff on one drawing, so.
I, I would still like this.
So, so I, I think I'd rather see everything on one drawing, but can we go through and make sure he has the list?
Yeah.
So when he comes in, it's a rubber stamp exercise and.
Right.
Not, not to hold you up, though, just to make sure everything's.
I, I think you got everything, it's just that it's, it's piece here, piece here, and if you submit it all on a drawing, then we'll, we'll, uh.
Alright, so I guess, um, do you want it on this drawing to share, or do you want it on four copies again, like, or five copies again, it should be.
I think if, uh, whatever's, what's the requirement for, how many, how many copies?
I think it's four in the original.
Four large copies and one reduced copy.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, four copies of that, but, I mean, not so for us, we don't want.
Yeah, and then once, then once it's approved, you go for the mylar.
It's just like a wetlands application.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so Victor, what are the issues again that we've been, you will keep these notes.
Okay, and I just wanna make sure I'm working it the way the board would like me, so the first condition was to approve with the removal of the foundation drain pipe. And remove of spill.
What we're gonna do now is we're gonna table, and these are things that he's gonna change on the submission.
Yes.
And then we'll review it at the next meeting.
Did you want me to run through those or?
Yeah, I want you to run through them, one is the removal of the pipe.
Yeah.
That, he's gotta be shown on the drawing.
Okay, number two is store mortgage management for the shed.
Right.
Or do you wanna be more specific and call for a drip line trenches?
Drip line trenches.
Can we be specific on that pipe?
Yeah.
So that he doesn't take out the, the pipe on the property.
So it's the removal of the pipe in the drip line trench around the, uh.
New addition.
Around the addition.
One more time?
Just to make sure the removal of the pipe is the pipe that is in the.
Drip line trench.
In, in the drip line trench.
Would you call that a foundation drain?
It was a foundation drain, is what it was.
It was, yeah.
We're removing the foundation pipe.
Changing it from a foundation, foundation drain to a.
Correct.
Right.
From display.
Yeah.
Or.
Okay, and then we want a drip line trench on the shed. After it meets the setback requirements, I'm assuming.
On shed, and verify setback.
Right. Uh, we're removing the, the, uh.
I, I would've called that a spillway, but, uh, it'll be.
This is, so, this is just what you're drawing up, this isn't finalized for you yet, right?
Well, I was hoping it was.
Okay.
I put a place for the stamp of approval.
Okay, um, I'm only saying that because I don't know if we had to put that in there, he could change that for the, what he's gonna bring back.
I've got three other pieces of this that don't have all the lines yet, so.
Yeah, exactly, white out.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not writing them in.
No, what I'm saying is, instead of just saying he has to remove that, he can let him do that without.
Well, we wanted to be sure that he.
Okay.
Understand.
Has to remove, Vic is keeping a list, you know, when it comes back in.
So when I first came in, I had four or five big sheets like this, and this is the only one that I've marked up, in case of something.
Perfect.
Alright, so we want the property lines shown on the drawing.
Yeah, we're talking about measurements, monument to monument, correct?
Property boundary lines inclusive of distances and angles.
Setbacks to setbacks.
And setbacks.
Okay.
Um, the lot area. The impervious.
Delineation.
Delineation, uh, this is road frontage and.
So, just to go back, I think what you, what we want is the current, um, impervious versus proposed.
Yeah.
Right, like what the percentages.
Right.
Okay, I understand that.
And obviously you need the lot area to do that.
Lot size, road frontage.
What is the?
Uh, village.
Village.
Okay, is that shown on the drawing?
Um, should be.
Okay.
Okay, you're gonna wanna say that, so that's gonna, you're gonna want that on here, village residential.
I mean, it's on the, it's on the application itself, eh, eh, right?
But if this is what's gonna be documented, these two.
Just add it, but the zoning is, uh, cause it does say that's supposed to be on the drawing.
Okay, alright. So somewhere state on the drawing that it's.
What the zone is, that it's village residential.
Indicate.
Yeah.
Zone requirements.
Yeah.
Well, not requirements, but.
Just the zone, what the zoning is, right, just that it's vill- village residential. Um, setbacks, we already talked about, um, flow of traffic on site, is that?
It's got parking. Yeah, so right now, when we have big trucks, building stuff, uh, Jim and Lance came to a, um, gentleman's agreement. Uh, when, like, Shirley drives a school bus.
So that isn't gonna change.
That will not change, thank you for making sure.
Just wanna waive this, same. So we'll waive that, doesn't need to put them, the, the traffic flow, you don't, you don't need to put it on the drawing, we'll just waive it.
Yeah.
Because it's not gonna change.
It, it won't be affected.
Right, existing utilities aren't gonna change.
That's correct.
Uh, where's the power coming for that?
Uh, right now, there's a pump over here that takes water, takes power from the opposite side of Wakefield Road into it, so there's one stretch.
So it's, it's just gonna be an extension within the building?
Yeah, right now, once it hits that pole.
No, no poles, no, no.
Okay, uh. The storage and removal of refuse and recycling, um, that's, is that? It's gonna be the same as it is now, I'm assuming, so that's another one we can waive as unchanged. Um, location of sign, signage on the site.
That by the mailbox is one little sign, it's less than two by two.
That's not changing, uh, location size, details of exterior lighting, any lighting changes?
Uh, no, he wants to make the new building look just like the old building, except for the roof change, the tr- truck, truss design is gonna.
So he's gonna move, he's gonna move a light from the top, I believe there's a light up top there, right?
Yeah.
He's gonna put one on the top of this new one?
Yeah, it'll look just like that, except for the different roof trusses is what the.
So there's not gonna be any additional lighting?
Just be closer to the pub parking lot. You can imagine this roof line in that picture, so.
Yeah.
And it's, instead of this dive, it's gonna continue on.
Yeah, okay.
So is there gonna, I didn't look at the trusses, are these attic trusses, or are they?
Yeah, they are attic trusses.
Okay.
The, you know, all the live loads are calculated and.
Is that living space up there?
No, it's, uh, sink, sink, sinks, well, right now, the shed is sink storage, but this'll be. Sink storage, sink, storage.
Okay, so exterior lighting isn't an issue, is that what we're saying?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll waive that one as well, it's gonna be the same as it is now, just in a different location. Uh, storage tanks, any change in, in the storage tanks?
No, the, this one's been adequate, but if the, the planning board wanted, wanted some, a second one, willing to put it inside the new addition.
Um, what's, what's it storing?
Right now, all it does is takes the gray water and stuff like that, puts it in a two container.
Fine dust.
Oh, okay, alright, so.
So the linens out of.
That's, that's his call.
That's why, like, I think it's.
He's gonna add storage, then we'd have to show it on the drawing, that's all I'm saying, if you're not doing anything.
If you're requiring it, he'll lad it, he'll put it into the plan, right now it's in the plan, because we thought that we should show where it would be if you require.
Well, it's really a manufacturer requirement on that, I mean, well.
His call, if, if he wants the storage in there.
You just can't have that stuff leaving the property.
Right, yeah, which this efficiently does now, and the new machine that he got actually reduces all of that.
So where are these going, where, these, are gonna be in the building?
Currently, it's right here, on the outside.
And what's gonna happen to them when you build a new building?
Will be, and we're cutting this foundation line here, cavity, uh, create a cavity, pull this one right back in to this position here. And hopefully that'd be sufficient for everybody, necessary, we'll put a second rig in, same size, opposite side of the addition.
So he just needs to show us, you need to show us on the drawing, what the storage.
It's a twelve fifty, it's a twelve fifty, um.
So just note that, note that on the drawing.
Okay. No tape.
Any landscaping beyond, uh.
Is there a field for that?
Nope, no, the, uh, two tanks, uh, the two sides of that tank.
Mm-hmm.
Take care of the heavies, and then anything that flows over into the next tank doesn't escape, it's got a T baffles and all that stuff.
Alright, is there any additional landscaping that's being, gonna be done?
Nothing proposed, and all of this, I mean, if you were to take a bird's eye view on the Google map there, you'll see that there's.
That's already in place.
It is, nothing's, there's not much room for.
No change to landscaping, what about snow, snow removal and storage stays the same presumably?
Yeah. This has benefited for storage, snow storage.
No, the Asian plant office, any easements rights away, property restrictions existing?
Right, everything's.
Okay, so, there's a few things we'll waive, and the rest of that stuff you add to the drawing, we'll, um. We'll table the, um, the application, um, um, and.
So the.
Continue the public hearing, is that what we do?
Yes.
The tank has two baffles. Is it a three chamber system?
Uh, two chambers.
Yes, two chambers.
So you, you're coming in with a T baffle.
Right.
You're getting below, just like.
And has it pumped off?
Um, yeah, well, Bobby will come in and clean that when it gets to level.
So there's no sun pump pumping out the clean water, okay.
No, gravity, everything, gravity, I mean, it's, it's been, uh, till I get on the job site, it's been foolproof.
Alright, so we need a motion to table the application and continue the public hearing, uh, until April fourth.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor? Do we have to notice the button?
No, no.
Alright.
Uh, thank you very much, I get, I get six things, Victor, how many do you have?
I have six conditions and then, uh, there was two waivers, which I'm, wasn't quite sure of the first waiver, I have the waiver of the.
Does, does a lot of waivers?
The traffic.
Right, traffic flow.
I think there was one pre- previous to that.
There was traffic, there was the parking, like, nothing, the waivers, we were gonna have to waive every one that we don't need to address, so there was several. I'd say go off of, so it's no, so it'll be quite accurate.
Well, he's shown that, the parking and the driveways are all shown.
Yeah, okay.
So it's fifteen, the traffic flow, um. There's no change to the utilities, there is, um, no change to, uh, so, so fifteen, sixteen. Uh, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen. Twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two. Those are, um. No change, so I guess, I don't know whether we waive those or not, but there isn't any change to the existing condition. No change, so I guess, I don't know whether we waive those or not, but there isn't any change to the existing condition on, on all of those. So we can, we can waive them, it doesn't, it doesn't really matter.
Yeah, we'll just waive them, make it simple.
Right. And also twenty-five, there's no flood hazard.
There's a natural disaster.
And, and twenty-four as well, there's no easements, rights away, et cetera. Uh, and is there a note on the plan as to its purpose?
Yes, um, well, I called it conceptual review, I don't know if I changed it.
The plan itself, it says, the purpose of the plan is to show uh, you know, a, a.
It's a.
Expansion of existing business.
Yeah.
Just put it on the plan, just put a note on the plan, that the, the purpose of the um, of the uh, plan is to show the um, at, the uh, building addition.
Okay.
Um, a new building addition on the site.
So what I have here is as is, as built site details for informational purposes, but usual, you want a little better defined than that.
Just requires a note that says that's what this plan is, is for.
Should it say maybe final presentation?
No, no, it doesn't say, just the, the purpose of the, of the plan.
So twenty years from now, if somebody pulls that plan, they're gonna know why that plan was drawn on it, okay?
It was drawn up to show the addition and surrounding conditions.
Okay. How much it costs?
Oh, it's gonna be expensive.
All right, I'm gonna give you that.
I think it's only ten cents a word.
Keep writing.
Stop talking.
All right, well, we'll see you in two weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you for your pen.
Uh, who?
He opened a public hearing, but he hasn't closed it.
Okay, well, so this is continued, and we wrote it on, on continuing it.
So it's a continuation, okay.
Yeah, we did, we did vote on.
All right, I'm just trying to make sure.
Yep.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey, you guys. Okay, uh, no conceptual reviews, no other business, Victor?
No, sir.
All right, so we have a couple of sets of minutes, and I think we can.
According to my calculations, we can approve the twenty, the February twenty-first minutes yet.
No.
Thank you, sir.
We can do the March seventh.
Yeah. So I'll make a motion that we approve the March seventh minutes as well.
Seconded. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye, four. So um, the uh, February twenty-first will have to be handled at the next, at the next meeting.
Yes. Actually, I'll take them back and hand them back up the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
It's probably better than what I'll do with them.
Well, if you guys don't want them, I mean, I, at least I, we recycle downstairs, so please, I'll take them back.
Actually, this whole packet's probably gonna come back, so. Do you want the whole application on that one?
I'll keep you on it because I brought a copy.
Yeah, cause we're gonna be back to this again, so.
All right, so I think we're done, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Donna.